Our rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Review of the minutes from August 22nd, 2022, draft meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. September 2nd, 2022 draft meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Open public comment. Is anybody on that? Is anyone on that? Okay. Move on to guests. Chittenden Dammers and VAST. You're up.
Quick introduction of the folks out there. Uh, but we're here to talk about possibly being used on that property. And, uh, you know, on the Smokehouse Conservancy. And Ken Brown is on by Zoom. He's also from the Smokehouse Conservancy in the works at Bass. So I guess we just wanted to step to the beat now.
I'm David Bell and I'm also the president of the Smokehouse Conservancy. I'm also a vast officer for some of the association. The Conservancy is a supported area of Bass. So, from what I understand, the town force, that one time it was heading up or itself, it was concerned as far as having access to. We thought we'd inquire about the possibility of getting the easement. And I know you've done that easement, but you're not involved. I want to know if that was, was on the subject.
This is basically the same trail that you'd be using?
We'd be using the existing.
The existing trail?
And we would do, and we would typically do what I know that you know, Remount Town is, I think in there easement, the possibility it could trail to get moved to the request of the town. You know, relocated on property. We usually do the same thing, it's where it could be guaranteed or where it ends up. It's something that needs to take place.
Any questions?
Yes. Where's the river road here?
I do know.
Everybody but it's forward.
So, this is where it's gonna be. Would it be helpful if we got a draft easement from you folks and then we could have our, we could look at it and have our attorney look at it?
Absolutely.
Just a, just a thought.
We do have kind of a whole of like.
He's been.
That would be helpful for us.
Yeah.
And this river road?
Yeah, you got two trails.
Where is this river road approximately?
It's over in here.
So that's what they want an easement for?
No. For, uh, this, this trail here and.
So this is an existing trail that Remount uses, so would you be maintaining it along with them?
Yeah.
As that access? Oh, okay. But it does, the trail exists.
We'll let them use that. I'm sure Chittenden has, they have an agreement.
You're gonna look at this one? Okay.
Yeah, so like he said, they've got a boilerplate.
Okay. Show us.
Yeah, show us one.
Okay. So.
That's great project. Well, it's been kind of warm.
Sure.
Do you want a motion or not, just to allow them to get the easement back?
For me, it was, I think for me anyways, was whether the town was even interested in doing something as far as an easement. I know this one, didn't want to see the final documentation to figure that out. Whether you were receptive to do it.
Is there any opposition to that?
No.
No, I think it's me. I think it's just providing us with an easement that we can, a draft to look over and then get it signed up.
Sure.
Anything else that would help?
If you send it to Michael, I'm sure he'll get it for us.
Let me just bring up next to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully it won't snow too soon yet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have Dave Propper with the Champlain. Hello, good, how are you doing?
Whatever questions you have, I'm here to answer. So, uh, before we did the one estimate, that little, so in our office, we graciously call those little sketches cartoons. And we do them that simply for a reason. Some of the stuff is complicated, just like any other big building or brick building, it all has to get built one piece at a time. So if we make it little, your blocks, it's easier to understand. It's not in any way intended to be pejorative, it's just like, if you already understand this, you can ask me advanced questions and I'll try. If you have basic questions, I'll take them as well. We had gotten a call from John Corliss a while back about the main water computer, your main SCADA computer in the water plant. It was having a problem. So one of our techs drove by, wasn't able to make progress on it. Our more advanced technician came by and beamed the fact that when Windows updates, it can wipe out SCADA software. They're not, Windows makes advancements, but SCADA's like permanent, you buy it in one level. And so when your water plant was done all those years ago, there was a license block. And that license could move forward a little bit, but once Windows levels came along, you just cut the knees right off of that SCADA. So we tried to make it backward compatible and it, it would not. So you're in a position of, as many towns are, buying a new SCADA license, a new computer that has that license. And like, how can you guys work, right? Well, you, you can work, everything's working. There's a big blue panel, very boring looking panel with one little pool screen in the middle, everything's still working there. All right? So you guys have control of your system, your water's not out of control. The question is, what do you do moving forward? How do you input things? How do you have them make accurate decision making, decision making? How do they control the system, not automatically? So the first approach that we got from John was, hey, can you replace the computer? So if you have two estimates in front of you, the older estimate is for the SCADA. It's a new computer and it's new software and it basically puts you back to where you were. So if you've been in the water building, which maybe some of you have, and there's a small office in the back. When you walk in, there's, you know, piping on your right, there's a big pump on your left, there's the nondescript control panel. You walk in and on the left hand side is their office. So that would basically provide you access to the computer, to the panel around the corner. But nothing anymore. You really won't be able to dial in, you won't have remote access. It does do dialing, it calls a phone, it'll, you know, put alarms. But you don't have, you're still stuck where you were when you bought the system. So I know there was a change in personnel and Nick called and said, hey, can you come down and talk to us about mission? So you already use mission communication. It's a piece of hardware that actually won one on the outside of this building. That monitors a manhole in the middle of the road in case there's ever a CSO overflow. There's another one over in Park Street over here and your team, you're fortunate for the team you have, I will say. I get to lots of towns and your guys care, which is kind of nice. It would seem a basic ingredient in the sewer guy, but it's not. So the day I came here, I met Nick and one or two other fellows in the garage, walked through your existing mission. You know, your existing setup so that they're better able to use it. I know we're Vermonters, you're Vermonters. So walked through that and he said, can you help us with the water system? So they then took me around all the locations. I had been in Taylor Pump Station, I had been in the water plant through the years. But I had been in each individual, like the one competition, it's cars, it's up on the hill, I hadn't been in that one. And I took all that information back and said, you know, how do you guys want to use your system? So it's really, I mean, controls are, I mean, it's got a filter tank, that's the idea, it's got a filter. How you want to do it and how, what access you want to, is where things come in differently. And the way your system was built years ago, there was this much technology. Now we're here, you know, and your guys are not asking for the over the rainbow kind of stuff. They're asking for stuff that they can use in their day to day operations. So I drew up that cartoon to kind of lay out the assets you have. All of your assets are in good shape, you know? In here, spread here, it's the beauty of a small town, you know? All of your assets are in good shape, meaning both the pump stations appear to be doing well. The reservoirs at the tanks, they are good tanks. Even the instrumentation that's in there, we would reuse the instrumentation. So only place we would do a little bit of work is the valve pit by your locker. And it's very little, there's really not much needs to be done, it's just us taking over a valve. But even the controls in each one of those locations, which currently communicate via radio, there's where I think the weakness is in your system. Yes, you lost your desktop, bummer, but you can still walk around the corner and check on things. If you lose one of the PLCs in these remote panels, PLC sorry, is just a programmable logic controller. They're of an age that we can't replace them. So now we're being in emergency mode saying, hmm, what do we swap this one with? If you lose a radio, your radios are also outdated and aged. So we're wrestling through that with Sugar Bush right now, trying to, you know, scab, find radios. They evolve and you'd think there'd be replacements for everything, but there's not. So each one of your panels that has one of those controllers, albeit in great shape now, I'm telling you, everything. They kept the panels clean, they're not been opened a lot. There's not junk wiring in there or jumpers. So I can tell people have either taken care of it or not done things in there, which usually is the better. So, but that said, one good lightning storm, you know, you can have fun. So the question is, how to supplant all of those things? Use the assets you have and get rid of those blocks that we don't need. A lot of those blocks are used for the radio communication. It gathers a signal, spits it out on the radio, the water plant catches that, spits it back out, makes it readable. It's really helpful. And they're just a bunch of Os and Ones and Digitals for their levels, like how deep's the water? So there are ways to do that now without the PLC and that would be mission. You are already a mission user, you're already on your sewer facilities on a mission, we could add water. And the water can do control in mission. And what that means by controlled is it has the ability to say, hey, here's the east tank. It has 25 feet on it, it's supposed to have clarity. So that cellular device calls up, just like all your other missions do, to Georgia, to a data center in Georgia. And that data center then calls back down. The reason they don't do direct communication is by having the office in the middle, you can tell if somebody's down. They're like having soldiers standing in each location saying, I need water, call headquarters, headquarters, call the right guy. Okay, I'm done with the water, turn it off. And all of those actions get recorded and it's all accessible on your cell phones. It's all accessible from any internet device. If you guys had a problem and you wanted guys to show it, they could put it right up on that screen. You know, you'd be able to see the trends, you'd be able to see what the equipment's wrong, how long it's running. It really does help them in their day to day activities. The day I was here, I think I shared this with you, but your guys found a problem with the Park Street Pump Station. They were looking at mission data and they asked me, hey, why is this like this? Because they're new. Well, it ended up that there was a plug on this pump station, so you pump station that was pumping to it. They could see that pumping that morning, but this one wasn't pumping. So it had backed up in your tank. Well, the reason we raced over here, the reason I know that one knew all the roads, because I was with them, I was afraid of a CSO into the river, which it didn't. They caught it fast enough because of the device and it let, it helped them ask questions. So the nice part of it is I didn't be here, like we're in Essex. My whole team can answer a phone call saying, hey, we see this weird signal, what do you think? So by going to mission, you have that access for, right? The longevity of mission is, I mean, it's, it's very long, it's been around since, it's been in Vermont since 2006. But they guarantee you connection to the cell network, which is just continuously improving. You know, people worry about the cell network, I worry more about radio. You know, I was in Middlebury at one point in time where a truck was sitting in front of the, the town office there on radio. And it was enough to block the signal that we were getting for one. It doesn't happen often and it moved on, so it's not like it's trauma, but it does happen. I'm more worried for you on the longevity of the performance that you have. And since you're going to make a choice, I would encourage you to make a choice towards the mission side. Which we can affect, my team can come down and affect it in a short period of time. But what it would do in effect is you have a high tank, I think it was the west tank, because that has the single proposals. Your, your assets that you would continue to use are the east tank. The east tank would call for water, it would call to the water plant. The well would start using the assets that are there. Pump up to the east tank when it was full, it would shut off. When the west tank called for water, it would actuate the valve that we have in the, in the valve that it crossed on mine. Those are two independent tank filling operations. So west tank could be calling for water and open the valve, and east tank could be filling as well, completely independent without any radio issues. And then the two pump stations just pump to the public and you keep track of their water flow and their pressure. If you guys in the future decide to do pouring analyzers or anything like that, you have, you already have analyzers back at your water plant. Those can go in, they can be alarmed, it can be trended so the guys can do reports for the state easily. Those are features that you don't have and in the proposal that we've made to replace what you did have, you can't expand it. So in a way, I feel like you're at a good decision point. You have assets that we can use and by just changing the controls, you can move yourself forward. But that's a lot of decline. So what would you like to know?
So this is the, you're proposing that all your $30,000.
I am applying. I am.
The other costs, it was a ballpark, I'm not, it was quite a few hours, move desktop computer.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm looking for words.
It's three at the bottom. Other costs.
Oh, I see, in other costs. So one thing you're missing is you are required to have intrusion alarms on water systems. So that's probably some old requirements, I'm not quite sure why. There is a door alarm, a harness, but it doesn't work. It's just a simple magnetic switch that you would have on, like a burglar alarm, just so that they know somebody entered the building. Uh, but we use an aluminum, aluminum one, so it can't be, if it's wired off, it broke and it trips. So that's one of them, the first one is door switches. The second thing is because your computer in an office is dead, your laptop is just gone. Doesn't, it doesn't even boot up anymore. We've proposed just a desktop for them so that they can use the mission screen right there. You guys can provide that, we don't need to. But it's a, it's a computer for them to access mission. They can do it from their phones, remote, iPad, really anywhere that has access to the engine. Uh, so that's that one. The engineer in our office is partially me doing design work and setup. And then I have a younger engineer who just started with us, who would set up some screens for your guys. Try to use those so that they could, Newport does this and we kind of like the way Newport did it. They have a team of guys pour water, a team of guys pour sewer, you have a team. But if they wanted to just look at water, they could pop up a water screen, they could pop up a sewer screen. We can make those screens for them and they're very, very flexible. We can teach them how to make them, but at first it'd be good to have Wes come down and kind of set that up. And then our travel time is just our mileage.
Just to clarify, all those other costs are already incorporated?
Oh, they're already in here, I'm sorry, they're already included.
All right.
Oh, they are?
Oh, yes, oh yeah.
Where did you say that?
Uh, you know, it's, again, it would be the way that it's presented.
Everything on here is part of that $43,000.
I'm sorry, everything's in there. Uh, now I understand your question. So under, like if you move up the page, Taylor Booster Station, there's a little asterisk. All of those components is what's going to go into Taylor Booster Station. Like the, the current booster station, all of those components in there, other costs are all included. But we would be, this is all the, all of them. I'm sorry, I understand your question.
So basically it's just the stuff that didn't fit into any other category, so it's all the other costs?
Correct, yeah, it's like, like the, the booster stations or the vault, you know, the vault's a two man job because you're, you're required for safety, that two guys in a holder. Most of the places we do, once we open up four in a table power, we usually have two guys. So the other thing is then somebody can be tripping signals, somebody being on the phone with mission. Because we commission all of these with the home office of mission, at each pump individual. So that's why there's, so each one of these has the guy on the, on there at the location, so you can see what each one, each unit costs.
Time wise, if we, you know, a month down the road, we say, go with it. How long do you expect it to, before it's totally updated?
The beauty of, the beauty of this station, of this solution is these units, these RT units, missions are in stock in Georgia. So we usually get them in about 10 days. If we knew you were saying go, what we would do is we place the order and then we look ahead. Our, our bookings are usually three-ish weeks out, but we're planning, because you need, you need to have this running. We plan to take this whole thing over in a week. But what we would do is, the vital operations are tank filling. So the first attack we would have is on the water plant and the tank. And what we would really do first is we would make sure that Nick and the guys top the tanks off. So that they were, when we rolled in in the morning, they were right at the break. And then we would take over the water plant and the east tank first. We would move then to the other tank and the valve in the next day. And then the pressure's off as water will flow. We're not taking over the pumping operation, we're monitoring the pumping operations. So we don't need to do those first, we should do those technically last. Um, but the, the tank to filling operations are divided. So I, I believe in the first three days, we had those skipped and operational. So we, and plus you have, if, if something went wrong, we would make sure that you had water built, we could do it by hand by the vehicles if needed. And we would just have staff here to do it. But I don't see anything going wrong, everything looks like it would, I think, I went through a little.
I'm just curious, it's the.
The other problem is, the other, the other one is a very long lead solution. I mean, all, all controls, we used to get stuff in four to six weeks, now it's 14 to 16 weeks. So that other solution is very, very long. We'd have the panel constructed, but it's not even getting the panel, any panels constructed, it's getting the programming time so that that can get set up, that computer can set up. We have a lot, we have lots of things with tank wall control. Closest to you is, I mean, we do, Middlebury does tank and wall control. But we have about 35 locations. We have 450 mission minutes out and there's probably 45 locations between Vermont, Hampshire and Maine that actually do tank for that mission.
So my only question is, like with SCADA, with the Windows 11 upgrade, is there any issue with mission in terms of like life expectancy?
Really good question. The answer is they have a guarantee for connectivity and oscillance that, that nobody else in the industry has. So boring stuff, but when Edge came along, Windows Edge is the viewer that, an internet browser, is completely compatible. So it, internet, internet compatibility is different than operating system. And so all, being able to get there is a lot easier than being able to control your desktop. So there is no more software purchase. A lot of software, you guys might notice this in your office, you, you don't really buy in software anymore, you're kind of renting it, you know? And SCADA's going that way as well. So although you pay eight or $10,000 for a SCADA license, it has a limited life. And there's no support beyond unlimited life. Yours was probably five, eight years ago. When you have an application that can just reach to the internet? Because there's so many paths to the internet, you can always get there. And the concern about cellular connectivity, it's only getting better in Vermont. And they guarantee that it doesn't matter if they change to 5G, 6G, 7G, you'll get free cellular, they call them radios, they're just a chip. Uh, like those do, we just come down and replace them. We can do about eight or 10 a day. They're very quick. We, I've been here through the migration from 2G to 3G to 3G to 4G and now 4G to, 4G LTE and 5. So the new radios are LTE long-term evolution. So they should go through six or seven unless somebody comes up with some other whiz bang idea for what that should really look like. And then they'll make a new radio. Your data is your data, there's no keeping it from you, you're the only ones who can sign in except for me and you can actually shut me out if you want. None of our customers do because we try to be, but you can download it into Excel, export to the state. It's very.
How long is the license good for?
It's nothing.
It is a.
Nope, there is no running out.
Three or four years.
No, it's been a very good product for us, I mean, your sewer is a good example, you know?
Do we have any more questions?
So just for clarification, it's like a $2,700 effort to incorporate in the mission or stay in the current system?
Uh, that's, I believe that that was a similar.
Okay, thank you.
So do you want to motion now to make the change over?
Uh, we could.
Accept this quote?
We'll do a little bit more research and then get back with you. I think Dave's presentation was really good and he was actually really helpful on us completing our O and M manual submittal. Helping me create guidelines for what would happen if SCADA went down. So.
We were local, you know, that's what's in practice. I'm standing. Yeah.
So do you prefer, do you guys want further time to think about it or?
I don't know that I need for the time, but.
I mean, I don't think, personally, I don't think there's a choice.
Yeah, because we could get wiped out in a lightning storm and.
I almost feel terrible saying that, I mean, I have a lot of my good weekends and holidays, people's life insurance, you know? And I mean, water system is not only put a big light on, it's probably pretty much the ground.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's on one end, buy something that will be obsolete, obsolete again, or spend $2,600 more and buy something that will last. or spend, you know, twenty-six hundred dollars more and buy something that will last.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, looking at, if you have a bigger water plant, like a Brooklyn style water plant, then sometimes one thing in SCADA really makes sense, but your assets are not the point. It's a nice building, but it's only one, it's only a pit that you're operating. And you really need something that's, it's true. That's why they radio it, when they need to break it. You know, if they didn't need the radio, the guys could just trip around. But radio is even kind of, in my world, cellular goes just to show.
Yeah.
Kansas is great, it shoots up a beat.
So do you, so do you?
Take a, take a deep breath and.
I think, I think Tom was saying we should make a motion to approve the quote and go with mission for the proper water system. Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There is.
It's Dave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll, 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 I'll.
I like the cartoon drawing.
Well, and when it's done, I'll be glad to show it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, good stuff. Back to school?
Yes, they are.
Good stuff, all the way around.
I can see them marching all over the bridge and they're, most of them are smiling, so that's a good thing.
Good stuff's happening all the time, so pick anything and take it away.
And we won't, there won't be another meeting before the fall festival, so there is the fall festival coming up on the twenty-fourth, and it's going to be, it's pretty good this year, we have a lot going on.
People seem really excited.
Fun, rise, petty, been a band all day long, fireworks obviously after, all the classes participating, baking contest.
Check out the new sign at the Beaver Pond picnic area.
Oh, yeah.
That Dale Christie made, I got it up on the website too, it's good.
Highway department, new equipment purchase and bid solicitation. Alright, got two bids.
We're opening all letters today.
Alright, this is for the.
Two cats.
Tool cats. This is from Bobcats. Kind of threw me off when he said the Bobcat. Okay, so, the final quote is eighty thousand dollars, eighty thousand ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents.
That's from a place in.
That is a place in North Adams, Massachusetts.
Southside Sales and Service.
The company itself is in West, West Farnham, to tell you that.
Yeah.
That's with the trade-in?
Not with the trade-in.
Oh, okay, no.
Is there a trade-in around?
We're, we're gonna try to trade it in and get some for it, but.
Just sell it outright, you mean?
Or, or sell it outright. I've seen that, um, after five to ten years, they don't get much, though. Just because they're, they're used and abused.
So let me clarify, because they're both Bobcats.
Yeah.
So, um, the first one was the Southside Sales and Service in North Adams, Mass. That's in the, sorry about that.
Yeah, it's okay.
Um, Southside Sales and Service, um, that's the name of the company. And then there's Clark Equipment Company doing businesses about that.
What's it called, Clark?
Southside Sales and Service.
She hasn't gotten to the other one.
Yeah.
Oh, that was where it was manufactured, Clark Equipment. Okay. This one is from Champlain Valley Equipment in Middlebury. And the bid on this one is total eighty-three thousand dollars. That was with a discount of sixteen thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars.
I think they vary by state. This was actually kind of hard to go out for soli, for bids, because, um, we didn't get our last tool cat from a Bobcat dealer. But the feedback I got from that, um, seller was that, that you can only get a tool cat now from someone who, who is an official Bobcat dealer.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so I went out for three bids at three different Bobcat dealers. So, like, if you buy a Bobcat in New York State, they'll all be the same price. So even if you go out for three bids, they'll all be the same price. So those might be different because we're in two different states. So it, so we'll see at the end of the day, it may still come from Champlain or the second.
The first one, Southside?
Might be delivered from Champlain.
It might get delivered from Champlain still. But we'll see, the idea is that we get the lower cost since we're buying it out of New York.
Right, right. And there's no opportunity or option to buy like secondhand one or through the state, you know? We bought other equipment through the state and they threw the whole lottery there?
We, we did look at that, and I talked to Kyle about it, and those things just get so abused over their lifespan. The idea is that you, if you bought one used, you just start investing in it constantly to kind of keep it going.
If we purchased out of mass, will we have to pay a state tax?
We should have paid any tax because we're a municipality.
That's where the other place is.
Right, yeah, it should be everywhere.
We do have the money in the equipment.
Yeah.
We'll have much left.
Yeah, so that should be fine.
And then the only, so the only dire things that we need to replace is the tool cat and then the older public works foreman pickup truck is in pretty bad shape. You saw me riding around in it a couple of weeks ago to a job site. I told Kyle realistically, after we buy the Bobcat, it could be another two years with what we had budgeted for. So, when we get to budgeting, we can have a more, I think, in-depth conversation about that.
I'm just concerned about, you know, warranty service and what have you, if we buy it from somebody from North Adams. It's almost like an insurance policy, you know? It might be better to buy it from Champlain.
Yeah, but you should be able to get it serviced at an authorized dealer.
Should be the same. I was actually kind of shocked that the prices were different. I was just kind of treating it as formality, so we went through the bid process.
And every, I mean, the sad part is, is that the dealer, the price of the dealer, from the dealer of, the biggest price is the actual, um, Bobcat, the tool cat itself. Because like the first one, the dealer price is seventy-one thousand four twenty forty-nine. And, um, with Champlain, it's eighty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty.
Yeah, because the place in Mass buys more.
That's a huge, eighteen thousand just in the price. So everything else is pretty much kind of right on par exactly, you know? Freight charges, assembly charges, logistics. And it's eighty-three, so it's eighty-three with a discount because we're a municipality, so.
We'd see if Michael thinks, I mean, they're next to price.
You mentioned eighty thousand ninety dollars?
Eighty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty.
Oh, eighty-nine thousand or eighty thousand?
Eighty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty is from Champlain, and that was just for the.
No, no. Originally.
Thirty thousand from.
I know, I'm saying, when I compare the actual equipment itself, it's eighty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty.
The discount they're giving us brings it back.
The discount was sixteen thousand one ninety-three. And then everything, the assembly, freight and all that is almost spot on with the one from, um, Massachusetts. So the only difference is the actual price, sticker price.
The dealer price.
Yeah. Now, if they gave us the discount that Champlain gave us, we'd say it's pretty good.
Oh, is this, you know, like the brush and any accessories that we've got with the existing one? Will they fit the new one, or we've got to buy some?
This one has some of the equipment, to update some of the equipment we have to go into it. But they should match what we have existing, will match into it, it's just hydraulic hoses and stuff, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Do they charge a delivery fee or freight or anything to get it here?
Uh, freight charges are eighteen forty-seven for both of them.
Eighteen forty-seven.
And that's probably to get it to the dealership, that's not to get it here.
Right. Because they're probably both getting it from the same.
Yeah.
Manufacturer.
Yeah, like the, the little wagon, that, that certainly is going to fit, there's nothing there. What I was thinking, like, the, the brushes.
Yeah, it'll all, it'll all, should be all, okay.
Why don't you talk with Champlain and see where it can sharpen their pencil? We'd like to, you know, get it from there.
I don't, I don't think you can do that.
You can do that, it's good.
When you go to bid, you can't go back to one of the, um, bidders and say, can you?
That's the whole point of the bid.
Okay.
I would move to, yeah, I would move to go with, uh, Southside, the eighty thousand ninety dollar and ninety-nine cent.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, mission carries and the bid goes to the Southside Sales and Service. And the amount of their wishes is of eighty thousand ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents for the total quote.
So we, that eighty thousand ninety dollars, does that include delivery here or no? Delivery would be extra on top.
It just says delivery, but it doesn't say where. Freight, well, it just says freight charges, dealer assembly charges, the material logistics.
But it's included in the eighty thousand is what I'm getting at?
All of that is included.
Okay, okay.
Alright. Beaver Pond top update.
Alright, uh, my turn. So, I, I think, um, I've given you as much as I've received to date on where we're at with Beaver Pond. It finally came out of NEPA review, and an updated schedule has been included into your packets. The, the only worry out of the NEPA review was that V-Trans suggested that we plant trees along the trail, along with benches. And, um, me and DuBois and King, who's the project manager, just wanted to clarify that, that it was indeed a request and not a requirement. The worry was that all that soil had to be removed for putting in the trees and amniotic soil. We don't have that scheduled, we don't have that, um, scheduled leaving the site in the cost. So it was verified today through V-Trans that it, it's just a request, we don't have to put up the trees and benches.
That's a transition.
Yeah, so there's been, um, so that's the, so you have everything that's been provided to me from the engineers, and I've asked them in October, when they prepare the preliminary design to submit to V-Trans, that they come to a select board meeting and go over that preliminary design. And I think it'd be a good idea at that point to even invite the stakeholders, because the difference between this project and all the other projects we have going on is that it isn't existing infrastructure, and the town doesn't own that property going through there. So, um, those are the biggest hurdles to getting this implemented, uh, in a, in a timely fashion going from here on out. So, my opinion, good idea to invite all the stakeholders to this meeting so that they can see the preliminary design. When we get into the right-of-way phase, we're clear and we can just move right through it so that construction is not pushed back from summer twenty twenty-four to summer twenty twenty-five.
Dollar amount spent to date?
The award amount to date, uh, is a, so the award amount, the overall total project was four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Alright, that's what we were awarded. In-kind match from the town is a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Alright, and to date, uh, in-kind match, the town has spent about twenty thousand. So at the end of the day, the town is scheduled to spend a hundred and twenty-four thousand on this project. And, and that doesn't include the cost of, um, of removing. Now, we, I shared something with you in your packets a while ago, and you, it might be familiar if I pass it around, but it's the actual cost of construction. And there was a change in that. Originally, they thought that disposal of contaminated soils would be forty-seven thousand. I don't know if that rings a bell or not. And it came down to thirteen thousand five hundred, and those are not participating funds. So the town has to pay for those outright, and that still totals about twenty-four thousand.
So it's a thirteen thousand and one twenty-four?
I, I am willing to, um, to, to make the statement, yes, that the thirteen, that twenty-four thousand is probably going to be on top of the one twenty-four thousand.
Pretty sure it's about the same.
But it's lower than the expectation, about the original.
Uh, yes, much lower.
So we spent twenty thousand dollars. February of nineteen, and we don't even have any sort of plans to look like that.
I think part of that was, um, the residents, kind of putting a big kibosh into the whole deal, and also, um, COVID. With the whole disintegration right up front with the right-of-ways and stuff, really, I think that was just.
And, um, and you have nothing on paper, it's all hearsay about that.
Correct.
One landowner who's the majority player, the biggest player.
No, no, I'm not figuring them out.
It's cutting through his whole entire property, so. Without, without his okay, it, it, that's what, that's what, it never deviated from Omea where they wanted it, it deviated from his property.
Right.
So that was the biggest hiccup and the problem that caused a lot of delay.
Yeah, but nobody put the bull by the, the engineers didn't take the bull by the horns involved, and so what can you do with this work?
Yeah, he walked, they walked the property, they were breaking it, and we called, breaking it with them. And they walked, because now we live on the edge of the road, you know? Not like in the railroad, but that was when they were breaking it.
I walked the road, yeah.
Yeah. And that was when they redrew the maps. They, they provided drawings to us that showed where they, where he overlaid the maps.
Instead of cutting through by the quarry, it's cutting around the edge of the road.
Yeah, which wasn't a, a huge deviation.
No, I, I'm going to disagree, I'm just saying they did that. I acted out, we had spent more money than that today, but I'll have to go back and see if I can find what they did. Because the numbers seemed to be a lot bigger, a lot so, they were on the, um, computer and it's those different.
They might have not given us, so when they invoice us, they invoice us for the total amount, and then I send a packet back to the state for reimbursement. So total, I mean, the project cost is probably definitely more than that, but our, our share, what the town has paid, is only twenty thousand.
So how much have we spent on the project? Because like, months ago, when they said about hate washing the project, we were so far in it, they said we wasn't doing that. Because our payback was going to be so high.
Well, why isn't, why didn't they send that in?
Uh, so the total that's been, been spent to date was eighty thousand, well, I'm sorry, the total as of January twenty-second, and it hasn't gone up much more than this because it's in NEPA review. And, and most of the phase A of the Beaver Pond half has been completed a hundred percent. The total spent to date, seventy-one percent completion of the project of engineering design is eighty thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-seven. And there's been a couple invoices past that, but it hasn't increased by a large amount.
And that, that's not our cost. That's not the cost of us. That's how much has been spent.
Total project cost.
And.
Participating costs.
Other than the annoyance of the fact that we're two years behind schedule, these delays haven't cost us any money.
We'll see when.
Also, there an environmental issue also that could have stopped to work for a while? They had to come up with figures for removal of certain soils. Which plan, which plan to do that? So, and when you hit a wall like that, you just.
It's just hard for me to drive down, uh, the garden of Beadon project, the little street pump station project.
I think it's a good idea. You said that they come back and they have, you know, the stakeholders are here too, just so that there's questions answered. So everyone's on the same page and it's.
Yeah, and I'm pretty, I mean, I've got the timeline here in my office. So it was just like with NEPA review, when, when, we thought it was going to be a NEPA review for six months. So when that time came and passed, that week I was ready to send out an email and say, oh, by the way, I've noticed that I haven't gotten a NEPA review. That, I haven't gotten NEPA review feedback yet. So we, I do kind of make sure that they're updating me. Especially if things are changing with the timeline that I'm not aware of, that creep under the radar.
In my opinion.
Now, we're able to complete it, right?
And they've missed twelve.
And there's no right-of-way in this.
No.
They come after the drawings.
Because you don't want to, you don't want to agree to right-of-ways without a right-of-way being in place.
Which means the project is.
Okay, moving on. Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
Don't move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Goren Bridge Road Water Project Bid.
We're just spending money like crazy.
We only got one, so.
Get ready.
Listen well.
Where's the crumb tree?
So this bid is from Richard Reed and Son Incorporated. The total. The total cost, of course, he didn't add it up. I don't see it. If my math is correct, did you say Creed?
Reed.
Richard Reed. Um, and I'll give everybody's figure by figure so you can add it up. So number one is to install the water main for two-inch PVC. Twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars for that portion. PCB water service connection, seventy-five hundred dollars. Washing hydrant install, fifteen hundred dollars. And the bitumous pavement repair roadway, fifteen thousand thirty dollars. All right, anyone give me a total?
You got it ahead or what?
It just seemed like too low compared when I'm like reading.
Forty-nine five thirty, I got two.
What was that first figure, twenty-five thousand?
Five hundred.
I'm just going to put the envelope in total, just to. For the two-inch PCB, PVC, three hundred linear feet. And then the PC, the C water service connection, three of those, one flushing hydrant. And then the bitumous pavement repair roadway is one hundred and sixty-seven square yards. Something mild or a tad.
This is still Richard.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the bid by Richard Reed and Son for forty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty dollars? For the Goren Bridge Road water maintenance. Did you get any other bids?
Yeah, so I, we posted this in, in the paper. And then I also did direct bidding to, to Luzen, Murkowski and Reed. And also reached out to Tommy Grace about it. Tommy Grace did give me a bid, but it wasn't sealed.
I don't have any idea if that's a good price or not.
We've been talking about getting this done for four, five years. I know it's high, but.
Unless we go back out to build it.
Does anyone have an idea if that's a relatively normal price for this sort of thing? I don't. I don't have a clue.
Fifty thousand dollars for three feet, three hundred for the pipes. And one bid tells me everybody's busy and.
Right. But it's too small a project for another bid.
Just waiting for this winter and bid it for the spring.
Now, this is a water main that's going to stop us from shutting off water.
Will allow us to shut off water.
Right, if we don't do it. I'm not really keen. I'd like to get this done because I'm tired of people not paying water and just using the water.
I'm just wondering what prices are going to be on materials.
From, from the people.
Pricing, materials is going to go up. Probably labor is going to go up. The way they keep raising minimum.
Oh, I'm sorry, Beres.
Minimum wages and what have you.
We, we can't choose it because it wasn't submitted properly, but Tommy Grace gives a bid for fifty-one thousand.
Okay. Now I feel better. Judy, have, what did you want to do? Did you want to wait or you want to get it done?
I'm, I'm in favor of getting the project done just because of what the process has caused us not being done.
I just wanted to know if it was a ballpark, realistic price and sounds like it was.
Everybody think?
I can, I can understand waiting. Part of me though doesn't think that we're going to get much lower bids than this, even if we wait for the spring. Prices are going to continue to go up. So maybe it is time to just start to pull up and do this. It's been, you know, we are going to recoup some of it from that particular count. About a fifth of it. So.
This is an example. We went out to bid for an alarm system for our wastewater treatment in Rutland in the spring. It was thirty-nine hundred dollars. Contact for them again to order the, and it's now seventy-two.
Well, look at the salt shed. Is it Pittsburgh that's trying to do the salt shed?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very, and I mean, it's gone way past the grant and it's going to pass, you know.
And for even the same, same way, they, they got a big bid, um, project. They've drawn up in India. I, I'd make a motion to, to that bid.
Can I second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. It goes to Richard Reed. Credit supervisory report.
So I've given you all a, and I apologize for giving you so many different formatted reports. I, I think, yeah, this one's kind of neat. But I didn't ever think I'd, I'd take over the responsibility of credit supervisor. So that when I first started giving the reports, it was just to try to clearly communicate between the treasurer, Celia and you all. But now things have changed to where I'm taking a more active role on implementing these shut-offs. So I've gone through all the agreements, every single one of them from the past. And, and I think at the last meeting I'd already done that. But I, I went through and I got a little bit more detail out of each and every single one of them. So the accounts in red here, there were ten of them. And as, as the board asked, requested at the last select board meeting that we shut off the top ten. And I went through here and found the top ten that had clearly broken agreements and that we, we thought had shut-offs. So like one Goren Bridge Road, we just spoke about it. We know they don't have to shut off. So I didn't, you know, really waste a guy's time with even going out there. So out of all the top ten, we made seven shut-offs. Three of them we could not find. So I'll go through, I'm starting at the top of the list and going down the list. But the top ten, Center, Seventeenth Center Street are setting up an account with BHAP. They have until Wednesday to verify with me that it has happened. Because they've tried to reach out to her and couldn't, their claim was they couldn't get a hold of her. So I just, I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt and they have to Wednesday to get back with me about it. One twenty West Street, there was no curb stop. Nine River Street, they were shut off and they came in here and paid in full. That was three thousand. And that was, that three thousand seventy-five is incorrect because that was August thirty-first and everything went up September first with interest. So it's like three thousand one eleven. And that was paid in full by Nine River Street. Their water got turned back on. Thirty-three High Street, there was no curb stop. Twelve Green Square, BHAP, I, they, they called BHAP. They told me that they did not qualify. They have to come in here Wednesday and sign the agreement. So Wednesday is kind of the big follow-up day from what we had going on. Twenty-six Pond View Road, there was no curb stop. And there was no record of the curb stop. And I did witness the book. So there is a book out there where the curb stops documented and I've seen it. Yeah.
And is it a curb stop or is it not?
Nineteen Pond View did not have a curb stop. Nineteen Chatteredden, BHAP, they actually did apply to BHAP on their own and they gave me their verification number. So they have applied for, for that assistance. Twenty-five Beaver Pond Road, they were shut off. They came in here and made an agreement for two hundred and sixty-five dollars a month. And that is whatever their total is, or, you know, rearage divided by eight. Thirty-eight West Street, they signed up for BHAP. I know that for sure. I got feedback from Brock on it. And eleven Goren Bridge Road paid five hundred dollars and they're coming back here at the end of the month to pay the other five hundred dollars. But even then, the five hundred gets them below the seventy-five, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So you don't see them on any future reports. And good news. So I sent letters to these ten people saying that we don't have to give you notice to shut, for shut-off, but we are going to shut you off. And that's, that's the red line items here got those. The orange addresses also got a letter, but it wasn't that we were going to shut you off. But you do have a broken agreement, you can get shut off. And about three of those people have reached out to BHAP since receiving that letter.
Question?
Yes.
Halfway to Sheik down there, nineteen Hope. Says bi-monthly. Do you mean bi-weekly, like every two weeks?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so every two weeks they make a fifty dollar payment. And they have been extremely good at making that.
And could you go over the three, what was it, three of them that we don't have curb stops?
That would be one twenty West, thirty-three High and twenty-six Pond View. I would suggest that we put them up for tax sale. If they can't come in here and make an agreement.
Well, didn't you say Pond View applied for BHAP?
Uh, so for sure, who we know has applied to BHAP is thirty-eight West Street. And I'm working from the bottom up. Thirty-eight West Street, nineteen Chatteredden Park. For those that I, I'm following up with, for the one I'm following up with is Seventeenth Center Street. And Melissa Morse on here actually got approved, got her money from BHAP. So that was three thousand, over three thousand dollars.
This is the most movement we've seen on this list in a while. So thank you.
It's moving. And I've secretly made a very ambitious goal with the chair of the select board. So we're going to, we're going to work really hard on getting the numbers down.
Your background deals.
Yeah. I don't want to say it out loud yet. I want to see a little bit more progress than on.
I like the color coding.
In yellow? Well, I'd like to kind of finish up and gather everybody in red. And then when we go into next month, if we've got enough time before November, we can, we can exit out of red. Because all of them will have agreements or they'll be with BHAP or they'll be shut off. Those are their three options. So at our next meeting, I give you another credit supervisor report and we enter into the next ten.
The letters that went out for the yellows should have a date as to when they need to get an agreement back to it.
Well, not necessarily because they don't have an agreement on record. So they just need to come in here. They, they have got, they've all gotten notice that they're delinquent. And on that delinquency says that.
But shouldn't we say you need a, we need an agreement in thirty days? Might as sixty, ninety, whenever you feel like it. No, it's got to be a definite date, right?
Well, I'll, I'll send them the next letter when we're ready for shut-off. Because we didn't want to kind of overcrowd ourselves with too many shut-offs. So I didn't want to set an expectation that in thirty days, we're going to cut all these people off. Because then in thirty days, I'd be stuck with.
Right, right. But I'm not saying we shut them up. You'd hope that they have an agreement at least for the forty days, you know?
So maybe we could do this. We could pick the next ten and then we'd get the shut-off notice. And then for the rest of the yellow ones, say, who haven't contacted you, you know, this is the second time we're reaching out. You need to set up an agreement. We don't have to say what's going to happen. We just need to set up an agreement in the next two weeks.
And, and I, I, yeah, I strongly suggest, I think we're going to get too kind of backlog into, into having and not being able to find services. And tax sale is an option. Judy and I have been working on, on policy to present to the board, personnel policy. It's one of our biggest policies. So it's a lot of kind of review. Get out of that. I've been, Brandon has a, has a good collection policy. And I think that's something that we can look over and maybe we're not seeing, theirs may be a little tighter than what we create or, or not. But at least we'll have some kind of template to work off of. There are options, there are options.
Yeah, and we're coming up on November when you can't do anything.
And, and I've had people, you know, say that they don't want to apply for BHAP. I've spoken to people on the phone. They don't want to apply for BHAP, but they want to make deals that are too low. And I've told them, if that's all you can afford, then you're probably going to qualify for BHAP. And I've told them, if that's all you can afford, then you're probably going to qualify, qualify for BHAP. And you need to call them as soon as you get off the phone. And, and those are the people I follow up with. I'm trying my best to extend that support. Long overdue people account.
That well's going to dry up pretty soon, so. Get the water for me.
Yeah, so Ben, your suggestion, just so clear on it. We get to our next meeting, we've got, we agree that those of the next 10 we're going to shut off. We send them their notices and then send the other. And we got to be careful too, because November 1st is it. That should be.
Yes, it should, that, that'll be our last chance.
So that'll be after the.
Yes.
Hey, anything else under water? Your motion to go out of water commissioners into the board of sewage commissioners. Second. Favor? Board of sewage commissioners, will those sewer project updates and change order?
Well, I, first of all, I want to thank Tom and Bruce for helping me out. You know, they've been coming to the, the, uh, construction meetings and, and Bruce has been checking in on Griff down at the construction sheds. So I, I, that actually goes a, a long way because it's not a long hike for me to get down there, but, um, I'll take any help I can get. So you've got the minutes from our last construction meeting. And then you've got the, uh, pay application three. We, us, we think that there's only going to be one more pay application coming in October and then the project will be complete. They, they did have to call the state down there to do their final, um, review of, of project stabilization. That was Josh. We think, what do you think, pronounce his last name as Careval?
I forget now.
I think it's Careval. But, so they, they.
He wanted more pictures of it from a different angle. So I think he's just, you know, playing this job out. They wanted somebody to go down and lay on the ground and take a, a shot up and, you know.
Volunteer?
So I, I think it's got a little, a little hairy in a sense. Maybe that's not the move. But, uh, they're doing a great job. But they said they would have most of the, uh, top soil and seeded except around where there's going to be paving that would might affect the edges. And as far as I know, they, they started on project B of this thing today on North Street. So they're planning on being out of there maybe in two weeks.
The only con, the only concern I had administratively was that we have to pay, um, these, in, these pay apps out of pocket upfront and then we're reimbursed after. And I brought this up at the last construction meeting with the state is that they are being pretty slow to reimburse in a, you know, $400,000, $500,000 check is hard to write when, you know, when you're a small locality like ours. But, uh, you know, we've, we've looked over the numbers and think that we can float it. But I just want everybody to be aware that reimbursement is pretty slow to come. And if we haven't gotten it by the next payout, then I might have to have serious conversation with the state and the Louisiana on issuing that last payment.
Yeah, because they, I think, believe they said that the pay requests were running out six weeks. At least, at least.
So I'll, what I'll do soon is, you know, Mary sends that check, I get the check number, I submit reimbursement and then the clock starts ticking until we get the next payout. And we, we will definitely have to have reimbursement back by that time.
They're doing a great job, um, yeah, and, uh, their field in Albertson Elliott Field die is, uh, and very informative. The numbers are coming out, quantity wise with the construction company that they're all on target. Most of them are all 100%. Yes.
Anything else under the sewage commissioner? Your motion to go out of the board of sewage commissioners and back to the regular select board meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Penitentors, be forth.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. So the assistant town clerk treasurer search is back on. I've gotten about 15 or 20 new applicants since I posted it after our select board meeting. Celia just got back from vacation. She was gone all last week. The goal is tomorrow to go down there, review all the applications and then set up interviews before I leave for my trip next week. So in a perfect world, we'll have a town clerk chosen by the end of this week. We had a FEMA roundtable training for EMDs. We haven't met in three weeks, so this was one of the first things I put on the agenda. It feels like a long time ago, but it was an, um, it was a, it was a roundtable exercise for a school shooting. And it, it, it's just really nice to, to meet with other policymakers, see how this stuff is handled. Because as, as the town's EMD, emergency management director, it would be my assumption to open up the emergency, uh, the emergency operations center if an event like that happened. But in reality, the school has their own emergency operations center. So I could see some confusion back and forth if they were both open. And that had, had never really come up in conversation before with the school. So it's just kind of neat to kind of hash out things like that, problem solved. So when, you know, the day comes, as the EMD for the town, I know that my support role won't be so much of, you know, in the action. But, um, you know, just being a support for the school if they need things to happen around town. They need support involved for any other, for any reason. You have the last pool director report there. Not huge numbers at the end of the year. But, um, I know Cannon does a good job keeping track of everything and letting me know. He, he always emails me when he's going to shut the place down, you know, for thunder, if he's going to open it up early or close early. This is kind of high level, but, uh, we, we did a reallocation of solar credits. Stan had attempted to start doing it quite a few years ago. So all I did was just reach out to Green Maple and ask them for their advice on moving the solar credits around. They showed me how the treatment plant was using a lot more all the time. So it's best to kind of accumulate credits in their bank to be used in winter months. And that's what happened. So that's why you saw that number go up for that facility and then for the other. This is kind of neat. So our, our GIS online has been updated on the website. So if you have a chance and you want to go on there, it's, it's just been, um, updated to, I think, like, like last year, the, uh, the base map layer. So you can see things really clearly. They've updated the layers, uh, for public works and all that. So if you have, if you have the opportunity, go online, it's on the homepage. Look at our new GPS, GIS. We got audited by the state last week. That came up pretty fast. They gave me a phone call and said, we want these, um, but we want proof that this money came in and out. And it was, you know, 20 invoices. Mary was a huge help, dated all the way back to 2018. So we got that wrapped up. It was just for, um, road grants. So the grants and aid, uh, South Street sidewalk, stuff like that. So I actually got, Mary and I put everything together and sent it back to them today. Your rent contracts are, are there for FY '22, uh, well, season, yeah, this, this winter. And the only changes I made to it was, uh, was just the payments and then, uh, when they were due. I could help Celia out with, um, and then Omea and Lost Trucks meeting, I'm at with, I watched the Pittsburgh, uh, select board meeting today and Brenda Fox brought this up. And, uh, and I'll bring it up here. So me, Mary Ann Gulett and Brenda Fox, we, and Bush Shaw, we all met at Omea to strategize. Oh, sorry about that. Irving Lot Maintenance, they were supposed to cut it last week. Monday was a holiday, they didn't get there. Tuesday it rained, they didn't get there. I noticed it when I came in this morning, Bruce noticed it, and he must've been riding around today, they hadn't cleaned it up. So they have big logs there, the grass grown up. I think we're all aware of what the lot looks like. I followed up with him today, saying that it need to be trimmed. They know what our expectations are. Last time I spoke to them, they said, if you're interested on, um, on knowing whether the property can go up for sale or not and it's buildable, you need to contact our environmental division. Didn't give me a name and it was, it was really hard to get a hold of somebody there. So part of that email today that I sent them, I asked them to follow up with the name of someone from their environmental division. And I sent them an email asking, uh, what's the status of, um, of contamination? Is the so, is the, the lot sellable at this point? Because that is, I think that's the win-win. We have somebody purchase the lot and it's maintained again. Well, that would be, that would be, that would be the win-win.
That would be that one. So what, are they going to, I mean, I saw his letter saying, oh yeah, we'll get somebody who hires somebody.
Well, they've hired somebody and, you know, even his email today said the guy contacted him and said he was coming up this weekend. So he expected to be done today. We can start, we can start writing ordinance violations. My fear to that is that we're going to, it's just going to be one after the other and then they're going to be up here and they're going to do it every single time we send a violation. If that's what it takes, we can do it, but it's another thing to keep up with.
Yeah, it's a pain in having to deal with somebody way up in Canada, out of touch with reality.
And when I spoke to him, I mean, he didn't know this was in residential area and all that. So there was debate on whether, he looked at it from Google Earth and saw that there were, there were tree limbs disposed up there.
What is the name of somebody more local for that thing?
Uh, I did. I gave him a name of somebody here that he requested, so.
No, I mean them, give us a name of somebody from Irving that's here, because Irving's here. If there's somebody that might consider managing it for them in Canada and, you know, what I'm talking about.
Yeah. He said, this is the area that he oversees. That's what I was told. This is his catchment area. He ma, he maintains a lot of different properties. I, I think, I just, I wonder what the status of contamination is of the lot. I mean, just having it sitting there and not doing anything is, I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around if it is sellable. Lot, and what are they going to do with it? Put gas station there?
It's really a small lot, so you can't build much of a, a house there.
Did ask, and I'm not saying that, that we would do it, but I was just trying to entice to see if it's sellable lot. I did ask him, you know, if the town wanted to purchase it, but of course I can't do that. So I just wanted to know really if the lot is sellable, so, but it could be a key part. Anyway. All right, now we're to the Omea and Lost Trucks. We still have an issue with Lost Trucks. Omea has really good data on, um, on how many trucks are lost. You just got to make sure to call them. I called one today. I called Omea, let them know we got a lost truck. They recorded. I called sheriff. But that, that required me to do some chasing, you know? But anyway, I got, I got it done. I got the pictures taken and, um, so, I mean, that's what we do. If, uh, if you see a lost truck, call Omea, call the hotline so they, they can record it. Data is power. And, um, really what we talked about at the meeting was there's a huge issue because trucks get off Route 7 and they have to go left and go up Wiphol Hollow, but they go right and use Route 3 as bypass. In a perfect world, if you could keep trucks on Route 7, then, then you're going to be a lot more successful at keeping them off these smaller roads. Omea has fought a big battle on putting signs up and because of Vermont law, they're not able to. I mean, the only thing that they have to even fight to get up are the little Omea plaques. And even then, the, there was a, there was an agreement there that truckers don't do what they used to do. They don't look at an atlas and plan a trip before they leave. They just get on the road and they've got a GPS unit and then they're really missing their surroundings. They're just following the, um, that was the feedback we got from the, uh, chief of police in Pittsburgh. Every time they ask him, every time he asks him, what are you doing down here? It says, run on my phone, brought me down here. My idea to Omea was can you require your carriers to, uh, in your contracts with them to have commercial, commercially approved GPS units? And they went to cooperate and said that that, that wasn't something they could do. Anyway, so we have a safety highway. We're going to meet with Butch again, me and the other town managers. We're going to meet with Butch again and go and prepare something for the Highway Safety Council. As that date comes closer, I'll let you know what we've prepared. But I, I will say a lot of the, the brainstorming around how do we keep them on 7. There's a, there's a little Omea plaque that says, and there's another one, there was one right out here, but I've never seen it. But, but, so Omea showed us a present, slideshow presentation and I didn't want to give it because there's no way I could give it as elegantly as maybe Mallory could. So, um. Oh, really? So they had a picture of where all the signs were and they even drove by and noticed some of the signs weren't there anymore. And there was, there was one Omea sign and I told them I've, I've never seen it. But it's coming into town and it's supposed to keep them straight instead of taking a lap with points, Omea straight ahead. But, um. Okay, I, I didn't follow up with them. But I reported it. I think Pittsburgh does pretty well off of their truck lines, you know? But the chief, chief of police also told us there. I mean, you know, so, yeah. That's right.
Lex Rutland received aid.
For, for a lot of things, for schools, for recreation. So I just feel like we sit here and listen, put up the signs, we had the sheriff here and they don't seem to care about the tickets. It doesn't seem to be a big deal. We hardly can say that. So like one particular place that I've been out here, everyone else has been giving the lost trucks and verbal lines that have done everything they've said about the, of these signs. And we're still dealing with it, but we're not even reading the word of the ticket. And we're not thinking any significant point people from Omea make to the other community, are. So I, I feel like, you know, it's just like other regions where they, you know, were bypassed. And we seem to just continue to give one out for the only transmission.
I think it's not even just Omea trucks. I think it's not even just Omea trucks. I mean, I think, you know, it's just any truck, by the majority, yeah.
The most of the few side at the intersection, the majority of them are Omea trucks, so.
So, um, I, I will say this, I know that they did answer, when I called, they were in pursuit because someone flagged them down and then came in here and said, I just saw a police officer or sent them to go catch this truck that was, uh, so they're in pursuit.
Interesting to see the next report. I, I'm going to put mine up on the table.
Yeah, and so, and they can't, and they don't have scales in their car to weigh them. And, um, so this was, this was a challenge too, is.
They can take them right up to Omea.
You have to take them to Omea.
Yeah.
You have to.
Or are you violation is being over with the sign? So that's just a double violation.
Oh, I agree. So that's the, that's the Omea and Lost Trucks meeting.
It's good you're, you have the town managers and Butch on.
Yeah. Zion Growers purchased 52 Main Street and if you're interested about knowing more about that, the Preservation Trust for Vermont did a press release on their website. So if you go there, you can kind of see a little bit and.
I was going to say, and the Herald article's already out.
More relevant. Oh, I'll check that out. And then they, and when I met with Brandon and Travis, the co-owners, they said they wanted to do another question and answer session with the select board once they kind of get things going. Florence Road paving began today. I don't think Pittsburgh's ready for their section, but we just went ahead and said, get going on ours. And then in your packet, you've got the data from the North Street radar. Somebody's going 60 miles per hour up that hill.
Yeah, over the gravel that you hear at night.
My man would blow up if I tried to do that.
I think they try to make it loud as possible.
Last name was Free.
Yeah. I usually got 23, that's it.
And then I've sat, I've sat and watched some people at, coming into, on South Street and, uh, it's noticeable.
Yeah.
They're slowing down.
Yes.
Breaks.
All right, expression and action items. Review of the bills. Everyone signed the bills?
Yes.
I would say Sheriff's Report. Anyone questions on Sheriff's Report? More break-ins, car break-ins?
Pretty much.
Well, I was told that last, this, this past year, there was 204 car burglaries in Rutland versus an average of 54 over the last five years. All right, fuel bits. We got three.
It's really true though.
Two, because one is. These are always so confusing, isn't it?
Yeah, I tried to make them a little bit simpler this time, to be honest with you.
All right, so first one is Getcha Fuels and this is for heating oil. $3.97 a gallon. Rack plus price is 20 cents per gallon. And September 1st, 2022, price 3.834. Then for Ultra Sulfur Diesel, they gave us nothing. Nope.
Oh, sorry, I just reaction, reaction noise.
Champlain Valley Fuels, fixed price $3.80 a gallon. Rack price 15 cents per gallon. As of September 1st, 2022, price 3.834. They gave a total rack, they put 3.984, whereas Getcha just put Rutland. I don't know what they did there.
I mean, it's, they, they're, they're still going to do it for five cents less over rack and they're booking it.
Okay, so this is the diesel bill. Diesel, there's no fixed price. Rack plus price is 15 cents per gallon. As of September 1st, 2022, the price was 3.975. That's it.
So that was, that was Champlain Diesel?
Yes.
Yeah, they didn't give a fixed price to that.
And they didn't, those are the other ones that gave us a diesel. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries for Champlain Valley. All right. And there's RFQ review for General Engineering Services.
So, um, before the meeting, before this one out, you all were provided the RFQ submittals for our General Engineering Services. And, oh, sorry, I'll get them out. And we asked for submittals on asset management, water wastewater, transportation, structural, geotechnical and landscape architecture. Then you all were given the, um, the rating matrix that we were judging by and this was also in the advertisements, so it was clear to the engineers, this is what we're looking for. So my ideas after the meeting, we, uh, we can choose more than one firm. So if we like, um, you know, like for instance, I think, uh, Otter Creek is only, um, interested in doing stormwater, wastewater and water. So if we just hypothetically, if we like them, we could pick them for those services and then pick the Boise and King for the rest, or if we even think we need the rest. So geotechnical would be nice because we could have somebody come out here and shoot grade for us if we need it, but at the same time, I'm not sure that our guys have the equipment to follow that. You know, we don't have lasers or, or anything to set up, uh, grades. So I think really the most important thing we're looking at, in my opinion, would be water, wastewater and asset management and, um, transportation. This is going to be really helpful in the future because when we want to do a project like clean the lagoons and replace the liners, we don't have to go through that extra step and stuff.
Exactly.
My personal opinion, after years, you know, heavy open, Aldrich and Elliott fits that category. They've done well by us, I believe, on both water and wastewater over the years. I think they're really familiar with what we have and what we may need.
It's kind of hard to rate them up, this.
It's, oh, is that right?
Yeah, I did. Well, it's just because they're, I thought they all gave good, you know, presentations and stuff, so.
But to be honest with you, the way my RFQ rating matrix looks and the way most of mine looked is they all got 100 because they all met the requirements. So what was kind of the, the factor that pushed them over the edge? They met, they met the qualifications, they met what we were asking for.
Right. That's what I thought too. And then you'll get pricing too, if you want, you know, some are a little pricier than others.
Oh, no, the prices don't vary that much.
No, and I guess it depends on who you have doing the project. I mean, if you have their, you know.
Well, if that CEO's in projection.
It's going to be crazy.
Yes, it's going to be.
But, uh, it's amazing, you know, Park Engineer One, uh, it's. We must check to be sure there's something.
Oh, I'm sure.
I agree with Bruce, I think Aldrich and Elliott.
I had A&E also for asset management and water and wastewater and then for transportation, I chose, um.
Well, they know our system so well, so I think that could save a lot down the road where some of these others would have to really dig and spend a lot of time digging up information.
Michael, did you have Dufrane as your transportation?
You know, it's hard for me because I don't have as much experience as you all at these different firms, but so the only, the only, um, the only history, the only history I have with Dufrane was the South Street Sidewalk project, which is going really well. But, um, so I had, for transportation, I actually had Dufrane and then, um, I would, I would put, uh, the, the, our structural, geotechnical and landscape architecture.
Dufrane too, they were basically one of the only ones that had more for the transportation console that I thought compared to the others.
And they're very easy to work with.
Yeah.
For that project.
I stayed away from them because I thought they were so big that they might not be a priority.
Well, and I'm wondering how much, we're talking about that for structural engineering, right? How often do we need a structural engineer?
I would, yeah, I would argue if we even really, I know I just said that I'd pick them for structural, geotech or landscape, but I'd, I'd also kind of like some feedback on whether we think that's really necessary, but we, because I'm not sure how many, how many reasons, many reasons we're doing this, but one of the big reasons is so that we can apply for a federal loan and we went through the proper procurement system.
Right.
So do we have any structural, geotech or landscape architect projects?
Have one.
On us in the next three years?
Probably the last one.
Afraid it's going to be high just because.
Oh, we had the Boise and King really high?
But I'm fine with like, you know, A&E, Dufrane, just went with two.
I almost said A&E and Dufrane and then if we do need a structural engineer, we can, I mean, that, that's going to, that's not going to be a project that needs to be done tomorrow. They could help.
Or something major.
Right. Whereas the lagoons could conceivably be done, something that can be.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I have a more of an interest in somebody strong, water, wastewater, because.
Who's waiting for?
Aldrich and Elliott for water and wastewater.
Okay.
And Dufrane for transportation and asset management.
And one thing I also liked about A&E was they, you know, they didn't, they didn't say, these are the only things we do, stormwater, water and sewer. They go on in the second page and say that they also work within other disciplines such as project elements and asset management, structural, geotechnical and project development. So if we do get a finish, it might slip all by.
I think a lot of like the bigger municipalities, they're, they're internally getting into a lot of like transportation sidewalk designs, so. All right, so is there a motion to go with Aldrich and Elliott?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or another motion to go with Dufrane?
For our transportation.
For transportation and asset management. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very, motion very.
It's a little, it'll put up pretty much, uh.
There.
It's all there.
There now, all right. It wasn't really supposed to proctor a lot.
Uh, I noted it in my, in my, in my speech.
Yeah.
Someone have that personal project, like, and someone, it was just kind of a boiler plate in there.
Yes.
Is there any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need a adjourn.